The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board Meetings are now in session. Today is Tuesday, August 22, 2017. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
I'd like to say first that I'd like to thank Riverbank. Our church just purchased permit, passed final inspection, so, thank you. And my name is Fred Wood. I pastor at the Riverbank Holiness Church, 3718 Patterson Road. I live here in Riverbank, so this city means a lot to me. Let's bow our heads for a word of prayer. Father God, we come to you in the holy name of the Lord Jesus tonight. We're praying, Lord, that you'd continue to bless this city, bless this council with peace and cooperation that they've had. We're thankful, Lord, that you, we've seen your guiding hand with them, and tonight again, once again, Lord, we pray that you'd guide them as they direct our city business. Put your blessing on them and on this entire city, on the businesses, the churches, the people, Lord. We're just praying for a special touch in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Council Authority Member District 4 Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Council Authority Member District 2 Cindy Fossey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Leann Jones Cruz.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here. Changes to the agenda, there will be a couple of changes to the agenda. I have a brief statement to make on recent events, and since there's a large public comment, I'm going to move public comment up before our presentation. If you can make those notes, please, Annabelle. Before I make the conflict of interest statement, recent events in Charlottesville, Virginia, has brought back old wounds from the 50s and the 60s when racial tensions were extremely high. If those of you who were around remember Salem, Birmingham, Atlanta, some of the others that had extreme riots between white and black. On June 11th of 63, President Kennedy addressed the nation on civil rights. And he addressed the disparities between whites and blacks, colors, different religions. And he gave some startling statistics, and those statistics have not changed since his statement in 1963. The disparity between black, white, people of color, also those in minorities and religions, remained the same. He did state that rights that you try to suppress on one individual diminishes the rights to all. This city will not support actions that will harm the civil rights to our citizens. This city will ensure the economic and social justice for all residents of Riverbank. As we move on, the many projects that we have, especially economic and the development of sustainability, that these will remain in the forefront of all of our city council as we move forward. I would like those who have any comments on that, make sure that you express them during the times. Thank you. Conflict of interest, any council or authority member or staff that has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare the conflict at this time. Seeing none, we're going to proceed to item two, public comment. No action can be taken at this time on any public comment. I noticed that there was a large contingent that was going to speak on a particular topic. I would like those topics to remain fluid, not is not repeat, not repetitive. And I would like those comments, I will allow maximum five minutes, but once you become repetitive, we'll take in note for the comments, and then we'll move on to the next one. I would like those of residents of Riverbank to speak first, followed by those not of Riverbank speaking afterwards. So do we have any public comment tonight? Thank you, Father.
Well, thank you for allowing us to express our concerns. And I'm Father Michelle Avila, pastor of St. Francis of Rome Church. Not only me, but all these people who are here represent a large Catholic community here in Riverbank. But we're not here only for Catholics, we're here for every good citizen here at Riverbank, who also belong to faith in the valley. And what we are basically asking all of you to seriously consider is to pass a resolution basically saying that the police will not cooperate with immigration officials, deporting any immigrant unless that person has committed a serious crime. So that's basically, in short, in summary. What we're asking is, we want to make sure that everyone feels welcome in our city regardless of legal status. Now, I have the privilege of knowing some of you. I know you are men and women of faith. I don't know about the rest, but even if you don't have faith at all, I just want to say that one thing in which I think we can all agree is in Jesus' message of love and inclusion, making sure that everyone is welcome, no matter the race, no matter anything. Everyone should be welcome. And one of the mistakes of many immigrants, not only in our city but in our country, is that they came without documents. But why did they do it? Because they wanted a better future for them and their families. I think you have heard of the golden rule. Treat others as you would like to be treated. So I ask you, if you were in their shoes, how would you like to be treated? Think about your families if you were in their place. I'm glad, Mr. Mayor, I'm glad that you mentioned John F. Kennedy. I would like to also quote, well, he quotes Dante, Alighieri. And I really like this. He says, "The hottest places in hell are reserved for those who in times of great moral crisis maintain their neutrality." Now, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying you're going to burn in hell if you don't pass this resolution, okay? Just for the record, okay? What I'm just saying is that I think this is a great opportunity in times of moral crisis, not just for you, but for me as a priest, to show true leadership. Because you were elected, I was ordained to serve our people, and I think this resolution will do that and care for everyone. Now, the last thing I want to say is in regards to public safety. And I was at your State of the City address, which I really love. And I just would like to mention three quotes in your address. You say, "Riverbank needs the help of all to address the activities that are illegal," end of quote. So if you allow the police to cooperate with ICE, obviously it's going to create an environment of fear. So I ask you, do you think that the good citizens of Riverbank are going to help you address the activities that are illegal, as you say? I don't think so. That would just be a disaster for public safety, because people will not have the trust to go to the police to report crimes. Another thing that you say in your address is, "Our city is strong because of you," end of quote. So if you allow the police to persecute, because that's how many immigrants feel persecuted, I think that's not going to make us strong, which is that what we all want. That's just going to make us weak, and we are all going to lose, not just those who are not here legally. And the last thing in your address that I want to mention is you say, "We all have one cause, the betterment of our great city. I applaud and personally thank all of you," end of quote. So the objective of this resolution is what you just said, the betterment of our great city. If you approve this resolution, I assure you that the good citizens of Riverbank are going to applaud and personally thank all of you, and not only that, but most likely they will vote for you when you need it. So I greatly appreciate it if you seriously but seriously consider our resolution. God bless.
Thanks. Is there anyone who's speaking? If not, I'll close public comment. You want to speak?
Oh, my name's Frank McHugh. Been a resident for 27 years. And first came to the city, a resident gave my wife and I, our one-year-old baby, a ride because we were walking from the train to look at homes, and then invited us to her home for a meal and the market across the street, and bought some food, and then have my wallet with me and my checkbook and said, "It's all right, pay us when you can pay us." And just from the beginning we came here, the schools, the police, the council, the leaderships, the fire department, the merchants, the stores, the activities, it's wonderful. This is a great city. My mother said many years ago, "If you don't like something, then leave it or do something about it." And I think this resolution that Father spoke about are things leading to bring our community together, not divided, because we are a city of action. And I think if we have the people be able to feel safer, want to invest in our community, participate in things in our community, they'll feel free to do so. And people feel safe to report things and be witnesses to things to help our community be better. My wife won the only school bill award that's given to teachers normally years ago for helping the schools. And I think what you give, the St. Francis prayer, "Lord, make me an instrument of your peace," you can look it up online. You know, "Where there's hatred, let me sow love; and injury pardoned doubt faith." You know, I first saw graffiti in this town, this pink or orange building over there. I bought some paint and painted it myself. I think if we do things to have our whole community become closer together and work together and accept everybody, it'll be a great city and an even greater city. Thank you.
Just a quick heads up, she will be saying her testimony, but I will be translating in English after her.
Muchas gracias por permitirme hablar estas palabras. Okay. Mi nombre es Ana Trevino. Yo soy feligres en Santa Francisca de aquí de Roma, y mi mayor preocupación es la división familiar. Soy una humilde ama de casa. Yo personalmente me gusta estar actualizada en lo que es la ley. Pero mi mayor preocupación es que yo soy padre y madre para mi familia y conozco muchas situaciones que están igual en el mismo caso. Tengo cuatro hijos que todavía necesitan guía y supervisión. So sería para mí muy cruel para ellos separar a la única persona que los puede guiar, ayudar y supervisar. Por eso me aseguro de estar siempre activa en la escuela, en el deporte, en prácticamente en todo, estar activa como un ciudadano activo, ya que tengo un gran compromiso de formar ciudadanos completos y ciudadanos completos en todas las áreas de sus vidas. La familia es el núcleo de la sociedad. Sin familia pues no gastaríamos ni siquiera leyes. Gracias, Dios los ama.
So, hi, my name's Ana Trevino. My worry is that I'm a father and a mother, and it would be very cruel to my kids to take away the only person that is able to guide them. Family is the foundation of society. Without families, there wouldn't be any laws. That is why I'm sure to stay active in all aspects of their lives, because I know that I have a full compromise to form complete citizens that are key to society. She also spoke that she has four kids, and she knows that since she's a mother and father to her family, she knows that she's not the only one in that situation. So she's also talking about the resolution. She also said that she has a great compromise to create complete citizens in all aspects. She tries to stay as informed as she can about politics, just so that she knows about it, her kids know about it. She's also from the friends of Rome.
This letter is addressed to the members of the city council. Let us not forget that America's...
Sir, any residents, please.
Sorry?
Your name and residence?
Frank Gomez and Riverbank. Let us not forget that America's 13 original colonies were founded by immigrants from England seeking to escape religious persecution. And since the country's founding, immigrants from countries like Ireland, England, Mexico, China, et cetera, have shaped our country into what it is today. Turning our backs on immigrants, seeking a better life, runs counter to what the American dream is all about. In these politically charged times, I encourage the city council to rise above the rhetoric of the hatred and bias and to set an example of compassion for our fellow human beings who have risked all to be here. We surely don't want immigrants to commit violent crimes in our country, but we also can't treat all hard-working immigrants as criminals. I believe we are better than that as a country. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Eva Galindo. I am one of 750,000 Dreamers covered underneath the...
And your residence, please.
I'm sorry, I'm a resident of Ocho. I am covered under DACA, which is the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals. In two weeks, my future will be up for debate, because in case you did not know, that same executive action is in jeopardy due to Texas and none other state attorneys wanting to sue the Trump administration to abolish it. So in two weeks, there's a very good possibility of me and thousands of others losing any and small protections that we have. In two weeks, I would like to see this council adopt policies that do not aid in terrorizing my community. I was brought to this country when I was three. I have grown up here. I have called this home for 17 years. I'm asking this council to consider their morals and do the right thing. Riverbank's motto is "City of Action," and I hope you will stand for action. Do not turn in your neighbors. Do not turn on your neighbors. Collaborating with ICE is wrong and inhumane, because no human being is legal. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Luis Carrillo. I am from, I live in Escalon, but I belong to Santa Francisca de Roma. I'm a leader of Divina Providencia, and what we do there is we feed the homeless. I believe that if you mix the police force with ICE, that would create a kind of, people be scared of being in the streets, I mean, go anywhere, go to the market, work, church, anywhere, scared, period. I would like to see this, I really like this city of Riverbank. I would like to see this be more unity here, and that's about it. Thank you very much, and God bless you.
Hi, my name is Iche Verde. I've been living in Riverbank for 20 and plus years. I'm more concerned about that part of my color skin is going to discriminate me. In case a police got to pull me over because I lose his money, I didn't know if he had paper or don't. So I gotta get pulled over for no reason all the time. So that's one of my concern, and the mother who got to take their kid to school, they're going to be worried about that. They're going to get pulled over just in case to see if she has or he have paper or not. So that's one of my concerns. Thank you.
Good evening, Virginia Meduño, and a pleasure to be here. I was really debating on whether I was going to say something. I've got to be in Salida for another meeting, and I need to be there now. But in lieu of my church, my community, I thought it was important for me to share just a few words. As you know, I am no stranger to this community, and I am no stranger to this dais. I think it is absolutely critical and very important, given our time, and I appreciate your statement, Mayor, that you made earlier. I just wish it had been a little bit more heartfelt, because I think right now, this community, these residents, are looking to you, to you, and you, and you, and you. They're looking to you for your leadership. They're looking to you for tomorrow to be a better place. And let me just tell you, this isn't just about being sensitive, but it's also about being cognizant of what's happening. In meeting with industry leaders throughout the valley, people are losing their livelihoods. People are losing business and economic development because of what is happening. I'm looking to each and every one of you for your leadership and your strength to start forming more alliances with this community, to bring together and to unite this community. We don't need travesty. What we need is unity, peace, and love, but it starts at the top. And so I ask all of you to be cognizant of the very important role that you all play in this city and on this dais. So thank you very much.
Any other further comments, Mr. McRitchie?
Good evening, Scott McRitchie from Riverbank. I've heard everything tonight, and a lot of it makes sense. There's some problems which we'll talk about, but let me give you an example. About six weeks ago, I got a call from a lady, and she needed food, she needed everything. She was crying over the phone. She didn't know what to do. Her kids were starving. I said, "Wow, this is really weird, you know, it's in Riverbank." And so anyhow, we went over and we took some food and found out that what had happened is she's been here forever. She has five kids, all boys. They're all citizens. Her husband is not. And he, of course, had to live here at least 20 years, because his, oh, his son's 20. But he was arrested at his work, and he was sent to jail over in Stockton. And within a month, he was back in Mexico. He's now working on trying to get his citizenship, but it's going to take him five years or so to do it. So this took this family, which was almost like middle income. They live in a nice area of the newer state streets. And it took them from being a tax-paying family to being now on welfare. So there's a whole switch. Instead of paying taxes in, they're drawing down on welfare. And the lady also has cancer, so she needs treatment, so she can only work part-time. These are the things that happen to a person who didn't have anything really going on. He just happened to have his name on the docket where he worked. They checked it. He was illegal. They sent him home. And he was here for 20 years. So that's the thing, I think, the sanctuary city would attempt to eliminate.
Excuse me, that's sanctuary city. Was it arrested here in Riverbank?
He was arrested at his work. I'm not exactly sure if it was in Riverbank.
Outside of City of Riverbank?
I don't know. There are family in Riverbank, but I don't know where he did work. The other side of it, and you guys are going to have to deal with this dilemma, is we do have laws in the U.S., and this would really say, "Hey, this law, we're just not going to obey it." And that's a problem also. I have a number of Hispanic friends. They work very hard in the fields, everything else. They came in through a green card or some other way, but it was legal, and they became citizens, and for five years of hard work, trying to become a citizen. And some of those aren't too happy about this thing, because they worked hard. And yet, these other ones now that may be illegal are coming in and having an easier time with it. So I don't envy your positions up here. I wanted to give you a case that you could get your hands on. This is an actual case of someone where there's no reason this person should have been deported. And it's turned the house upside down. There's no man in the family now. You've got five boys. What's going to happen? So these are the things you have to consider, but it's a tough deal, because you've got all sides of it. And there's a number of, like I say, my friends who are citizens that see people now getting an easy way out. So, good luck, guys.
He's speaking. He'll be the last comment for tonight.
Good evening. My name is Salvador Padilla. I live on Cedar Circle, Riverbank. I'm here to speak about keeping every community member safe in Riverbank. With the current national and local political climate, some of our community members feel less safe. Some people are not reporting crimes in fear of being deported. I understand the Sheriff Department has issued a letter to the city council that there's no collaboration between ICE and the sheriff unless the person has a criminal history. Unfortunately, the community knows a different story. I, for instance, have a family member who was imprisoned in Stanislaus County Jail. His charges were dropped, and on the same day he was released, ICE shows up at his house that evening. This is just one personal story, but there are many other cases. For example, the wife who called for spouse abuse. Instead of picking up her husband, she's the one who got picked up and was deported. We as a community, we as community members of Riverbank are responsible for the safety of everyone. Even if one community member is not reporting crimes, the city of Riverbank is not a safe community, because we're sending the message to the real criminals that they can get away with crime. I'm asking the council to help us restore trust in law enforcement so the Sheriff Department can serve and protect every community member. Thank you.
Are there any other topics other than what we've been talking about? If you have comments, you can submit them in writing or at the next council meeting, because I have heard a lot of repetitive, and I'd like to move on. And if you have something definitely totally different from what I've already heard about the resolution, about deportation, what's the next thing? the resolution, about deportation, what's the next thing?
Okay, so, um-
Can you name?
My name is Kim Martinez. I am a resident of Modesto, but I work here in Stanislaus. No, my, I work in Riverbank. So I've been working with the community for over a year. I have been working with the community over a year of Riverbank, I have had many meetings with all of you guys, uh, with most of, of City Council, and as, uh, as faith in the valley and as community members, we would like to ask for you as City Council to put this resolution, and to work with us, the community, to put this resolution on your agenda. Is that something that, that we can request of you? So we are hoping that we do get, that, I understand that this is public comment and that there is no interaction, but we are hoping that with all these people that showed up today, that you guys understand that this is a real issue, that we wanna make sure that the City of Riverbank is safe, and that it's a welcoming community for everyone here. Uh, so we hope that we get, we get some feedback from you guys within the next, uh, one to two weeks, so that we can have this on the agenda next month. This is a very important issue for, we fill this room, we fill the other room, this is important to us. These are the residents of mostly Riverbank and the, the, the surrounding cities that want to see Riverbank be one of the second city in the entire Central Valley to pass a resolution that says, "We stand with you regardless of status." Thank you.
Without just going with discussion, which we cannot have, let's do a workshop on it. Okay? And where we can talk, and so we can have a dialogue, instead of someone telling me what I have to do, when there are a lot of different items, ramifications, such as funding, and that we could collapse the city.
Yeah, and we can maybe get law enforcement, so-
Right, 'cause I know what law enforcement has done, and I know that, uh, for every, you know.
Uh, so we, it's looking like we may have a joint meeting on the twelfth with Modesto's, that probably wouldn't be the most appropriate state.
Oh, it'll be after that.
So maybe the second meeting of September.
The twenty-sixth?
Yeah. Well, um, well, I, I have Kim's information and Father Mese also, we'll, we'll-
And I'd like to see what they propose as a resolution.
Yeah.
And I'd like to make sure that everyone knows what the sheriff has put out, what their, what their cooperation or non-cooperation has been with ICE.
Okay, we'll be done.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Um, any other further comment? Thank you, a closed public comment, and we're gonna go back to item 1.1, Recycle Wastewater Project. And we'll take about a, a three-minute recess while we, you wanna stay happy, wastewater treatment is, is a fascinating subject.
It's very important to Riverbank.
I'd love to have you.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Regular City Council and Authority, Redevelopment Authority Board is back in session. Uh, we're going to continue with item one, which is the Recycle Wastewater Project update.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, if I could have Michael Riddell, our Public Works Superintendent, come up. Uh, he's gonna introduce Neil, uh, who is with KSN, uh, he's our wastewater engineer, and Mike has worked with him forever. And maybe, Mike, in addition to introducing his last name, uh, you could talk just a little bit about why we put this on, and-
Okay, 'cause the, as you can see, the city manager took most of my thunder, anyway. Uh, you, good evening, Michael Riddell, Public Works Superintendent, City of Riverbank, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Neil Caldwell, who is with KSN, and most of you are familiar with, um, has done a few presentations. Uh, this is an update to a presentation we did last year. Um, we now have a new council member here. Uh, there was some direction given at that point in time of, uh, and looking for some grants and this, along these lines. Uh, Neil has kind of put together a whole picture here per se, and cost-wise and this kind of stuff, to give everybody a clear picture of what we are looking at, and what it could very well end up costing, and along those lines, uh, to give everybody a, a good clear picture, so then we can, or you can decide, uh, you know, how you want us to pursue, or the direction you want us to go. So without further ado, I'll bring Neil Caldwell up.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Neil Caldwell with Kelson Sinak Nidik. Um, as, uh, as Mr. Riddell mentioned, um, what, what I'm here to do is, is to give you a, an updated presentation on, on some very broad level, we call them broad reconnaissance level, um, uh, planning, or investigation of alternatives and options, really, that the City of Riverbank may have in terms of looking at potentially implementing a recycled water project. This, this presentation is substantially similar to a presentation that I gave last year, though I've, I've included a couple updates, um, have some discussion regarding some of the possible, uh, drivers or triggers for, for considering recycled water use. Um, gone through and updated some of the, the cost information regarding the facilities that, that we're starting to put our, put our arms around, what, what may be needed. And then again, kind of allow this, this, this process discussion go forward, and then, then as, as I understand, staff wants to see, to have a discussion, reaffirmation of, of direction, then, that the City, uh, City Council may want to take at that point. Uh, so, so this is a brief outline of, of my presentation. I wanna go back through, again, what recycled water is, in a broad, broad level. Um, if there's some, some questions, um, Councilmember Fosse, I know that, that this is new to, uh, information for you, not a new topic, but new information for you. So, um, if you wanna particularly go deep on some elements, I'm, I can, you can halt me and ask some questions, we'd be happy to, to answer those, as, as well as any of the, the council members. Um, again, go through the drivers, uh, that, that may exist for considering recycled water as a project. Go through the updated facilities costs and the, the major components, talk about the phasing approach that we think would be appropriate if you do consider moving forward. Uh, look at some of the, the options for funding, uh, funding either at a planning level, or for some capital improvements, and some, some strategies, general strategies there, and then, then kind of come back to recap on some, some potential next steps. So recycled water, um, recycled water is taking wastewater, treating it to a certain level, so that it can be beneficially reused. And the treatment levels can range anywhere from a basic, we call a, a secondary treatment, um, that water that's treated to a secondary level can be, uh, reused in, in a lot of agricultural acti, uh, activities, um, agricultural, um, settings, where there's limited, uh, exposure to the public and whatnot, um, to, up to a, a high-level treatment, which is what we call Title 22 tertiary level. That includes filtration, high levels of disinfection. And with that higher-level treatment allows a lot more different types of recycled water uses. In the context of City of Riverbank, we've identified these four broad areas that, that you could consider, uh, for, you know, taking the wastewater that's generated by our existing plant, treating it to, to an additional higher level, and having some beneficial reuse of, of those waters. Um, first one is, uh, through a surface irrigation, so it'd be like a sprinkler or a flood type of irrigation of agricultural, um, lands, um, or it could be a landscape, um, irrigation, say, on a, a golf course. Uh, ground oil recharge is a beneficial reuse of recycled water. You have to have some balance, you have to do some mixing with, with freshwater to be able to do that in California. Um, they're industrial uses, so power generation or other industrial uses can use recycled water. Um, and then a, kind of a, an easy one, a fairly simple one, is, is i- if you treat to certain levels, you can have, as part of a program, uh, use of recycled water for construction purposes, for, for compaction of soil, or for dust control, and the like. Um, as I mentioned, Title 22, so the California, Title 22 of the California Code of Regulations is what, um, prescribes the, the treatment requirements and the, the opportunities for use of recycled water. So you'll see that, that discussion through, through my, my, um, presentation here. So what, what might be some drivers for the city to consider implementing a recycled water project? I'm gonna go through four broad, or three broad care, uh, categories here. One is, uh, at, at a city level to look at consistency with some statewide policies. So, um, the statewide policies regarding recycled water use start with the State Water Resources Control Board. They have, you know, broad objectives for the state, where they wanna promote recycled use over other types of, of disposal methods for wastewater. In kind, the regional board, is a subset of the state water board, has developed its own policies, and, and is, is tends to implement those through, through the permitting process, as well as the basin plan, that also promotes recycled water use. Now, from regulatory perspective, and this kind of comes, comes more local, in terms of your facilities, you may wanna start looking at your wastewater treatment disposal practices and say, okay, maybe there's some ways that we can, um, reduce the, the effect, or the, the, the impact, if any, on, on, uh, local water quality, from things like, uh, um, nitrogen, nitrogen that, that's naturally, or, well, present in wastewater, that can, um, uh, can, under certain loading conditions, can cause issues with groundwater. Um, you may also look at the, the salt load that wastewater may have, and, and see, and instruct to look at implementing different, uh, practices and strategies to minimize those, uh, those loads, and therefore the potential for, for negative impacts. You may, under regulatory requirement, may also have to start looking at recycled water use from a, a capacity-driven re-permitting process. As the city has growth that occurs, and when you get to a point where you have to renew your permit, the Regional Water Quality Control Board, as you renew your permit, they'll ask you some questions. They'll ask you, "Have you looked at recycled water use? Is it feasible?" Yes or no? They'll ask those kinds of questions. Um, and, and it's, it's good to be, be in a position, as you, as you, um, you look at expansion of your facilities, to be able to answer that question. They don't mandate it, but it's good to be in a position to, as a, as an a- agency or community, see whether or not that's something that's feasible. Again, going back to the capacity drivers, um, uh, as, as growth occurs within, within the city, your, your treatment facilities need to be improved, upgraded. Again, that goes back to the regulatory requirement through, through re-permitting process and triggers of, of having to look at recycled water use. And then again, at the water quality requirements, where from a, a, a capacity perspective, as more nitrogen or more salts, um, are generated from, from additional wastewater flows, do you need to start, look at some, at some different ways of minimizing impacts to the environment? So, again, this is, this is some new information. We didn't go through this in, in, uh, much detail at the last presentation, so I wanted to go through these elements. So when, when we started looking at these opportunities, we, we stepped back and we looked at, at a, at a broad, region-wide, uh, potential. What, what could a recycled water project look like that the City of Riverbank was, was involved in? So we stepped way back and looked at it, look at it from a corridor perspective, and identified along the, the river corridor, we've Oakdale, Riverbank, Escalon, um, Salida, Ripon, the kind of, there, there's a, there's a, a variety of communities, wastewater treatment plants, that could be part of some regional, regional program, regional, uh, project. Looked at that, again, from the, the opportunity that, that really recycled water is based, is based on a wastewater source. So the more sources you can bring together and combine, the better the potential benefit. Um, through this really broad assessment, we, we ruled off, ruled out at, at first incorporating any sort of program with, with Salida and Ripon, they're kind of going their, their own directions, different directions right now, so it didn't really make sense to try, start to talk about them being part of a, a, a regional program that, that maybe centers around, around Riverbank. So that leaves, at this point, um, Escalon, Oakdale, and, and Riverbank. And so this table here summarizes the, the flows, the, the approximate current wastewater flows into these wastewater treatment plants. So we looked at this and said, well, this is, this is your potential source. So we've identified a little more than four million gallons per day of wastewater that's generated from these communities. That could be a target for some, at least near-term ultimate capacity for a recycled water project. And so from there, we, we started to look at the treatment levels, and looked at, look at options and alternatives. Um, important to note, for these facilities, the existing level of treatment. So City of Escalon, um, undisinfected secondary, a pond system, very similar to, to what the City of, of Riverbank has. City of Oakdale, they've made some pretty substantial investments in their wastewater treatment plant. They have, um, filtration and disinfection, so they, they get to a tertiary level. Um, as I understand their facility, it, there's some little things that they'd have to do to, to be fully compliant with Title 22, to be able to reuse that, recycle that water, but they're really close. Um, and then for City of Riverbank, your ponds right now is, which is what we call an undisinfected secondary. So this, this table right here shows us the opportunity in terms of flow on an average daily basis, and then starts to define for us what sort of improvements might be needed to, to produce recycled water. Okay, so from there, we, we step back even further, it's kind of hard to see on, on this, but what this map is, you've got Riverbank here, and then this is a variety of land uses. And it shows mostly agricultural land uses, we've got, um, nut crops, um, I have to look at my version here to, to be able to read it. So we have nut crops, um, uh, that's the orange, a yellow, uh, non-food crops, a green is, um, uh, those are fruit, um, purple's vineyard, um, the tan colors, golf courses, a couple golf courses in this area, and then there's other, other agricultural uses. So what this picture depicts is the large opportunity. Now, most of these areas here are probably irrigated either by- Now, most of these areas here are probably irrigated either by OID, MID, or, or, or SSGID. But still, there's an opportunity for recycled water use there that could be explored. So here, we're, we're matching up the source with the use. And this, this table here shows the, uh, the range in terms of acreage. So this, this total area that we looked at, and I think it was a, um, uh, I think we did like a five-mile radius, I think, on the city, you know, forty-seven thousand acres potential. So some subset of that could be part of a recycled water project. Again, there's, that's the, uh, range of, of crop types. Now, what's important to note is, um, nut crops in the fruit orchard, orchards, um, normally those are going to require like a, a tertiary level of treatment, a higher level of treatment than say, the, um, the forage or fodder crops. So what the rest of our study goes through is, is we, it, we feel that for the city to consider implementing a recycled water project, that you're probably best off to go with the highest level of treatment. That gives you the broadest range of, of recycled use opportunities. And substantially facilitates your permitting process for those growers that, that may be using, using recycled water, makes it easier for them. And that's an important element of, of any implementation. So from a facilities, um, uh, context, this, this graphic shows the, the three wastewater treatment plants. Here's the Riverbank wastewater treatment plant. So you have your secondary treatment. And then your primary disposal right now is through percolation ponds. City of Escalon, very similar. City of Oakdale, tertiary level treatment. I understand they're still, they still use percolation ponds for disposal. So the concept, if this were to be a regional project, would be to combine the effluent from all of these facilities, for Riverbank and Escalon, provide additional treatment, bring that up to a tertiary level disinfected, combine that with a tertiary disinfected effluent that's already produced by Oakdale, and then that's, that's your, your source, your potential source for, for a, you know, larger scale, um, a regional, uh, recycled water use program. So, so doing this, and this would be at about, we cost this out about a four million gallon per day capacity. This assumes that during those summer months when irrigation is, is needed, that this facility would produce and deliver, four million gallons per day of recycled water for, for use. So overall, the, um, the facilities components, um, to make this happen, if we assume that we're taking, um, um, Oakdale effluent to a central location, pipeline, pump station, take an Escalon effluent to a central location, pump station, pipeline, and then constructing a variety of facilities here to further treat both the Oak, both the Escalon and, and, um, Riverbank, um, wastewater to higher level for recycled use, and then having a recycled water pump station then that would deliver it to, to end users. Overall, this, which is a fairly grand project, um, is about a twenty-six million dollar, um, price tag to do, to do that kind of project. So that's, that's kind of what you, you could see if you were to, to go down, down the path of a, a regional type of, of recycled water project. And these are updated costs. We updated these from the last one to, uh, twenty seventeen, twenty seventeen basis. Um, that facility, eh, takes more manpower, takes more chemicals, more energy to operate. So this is our estimate of an annual operating cost. Uh, actually, excuse me, this is the O and M cost. See, my table says capital cost is O and M. Um, um, for the Oakdale pump station, oops, for the Oakdale pump station, Escalon pumping, and then the tertiary filtration system. So I think these are fairly conservative numbers, but you're probably looking at the, on the order of about two million dollars per year between power, staff, uh, laboratory, uh, analysis, chemicals and, and, and the like. So that, that's something to consider in terms of, uh, implementation. So that's a big picture, big project, big price tag. Um, what might you do in the near term? So City of Escalon, you, you, or City of, of, uh, of, uh, Riverbank, you may want to implement something near term. City of Escalon, City of Oakdale, you know, they, these, we haven't had any discussions with them about anything regional at, at this point, but that, that may be something that, that could be part of a discussion, uh, down the road. So what might you do? You might look at, and this is a concept here, you might look at taking about maybe forty percent of your flow, construct a initial facility or a pilot facility, um, call it what you may, and produce an initial, uh, volume of recycled water, test the policy, get a program going, and then build upon that. So this is, this is a concept that, that maybe, maybe something you want to look at and, and move forward with. Um, in this case, it'd be about a, um, about a six-hundred-thousand gallon per day production rate. Um, that would, we've estimated, you could irrigate probably about eighty to ninety acres of, of agricultural land with, with that water. So be, wouldn't be that hard to find one or two growers that, that might be interested in, in receiving that and having kind of a focused project that would go, go down that, that route. Um, and then in the end, build on that. So if you built to, say, at a, at a regional basis, or even through, um, increased, over time increased development flows within Riverbank itself, you could have a larger facility and be able to irrigate more land. Um, so for example, a four, roughly four million gallon per day, a facility would be able to irrigate about four hundred, six hundred acres of, of agricultural land. Okay, so thinking about project phasing, then what are some, some near steps, near-term steps, and what are some options for, for funding? Uh, this, this table here talks about three components, um, planning grants, uh, construction financing through loans or construction grants. And so this, this, these, this information here is from the, uh, State Water Source Control Board, what kind of programs they have available. Depending on where an agency is in its, i- its development of a project like this, some of these, these components may, some of these, these financing, um, mechanisms, mechanisms may make sense. So for you at, at the very reconnaissance planning level, you may want to look at, at pursuing some planning grant money to be able to further define, refine, and prove out this kind of, of concept. Uh, as an example, here, the, um, the State Water Source Control Board has recycled water, uh, planning grants available. It's a, uh, a fifty percent match, um, max grant, uh, per component is a seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, we had some initial discussions with this, with the, um, the state board on this, and what they would, be able to consider for you is to split your project up into two components. Consider the treatment as one component, which would be eligible for seventy-five thousand grant for that component alone. And look at the distribution and use side as another component eligible for another seventy-five thousand, uh, um, max, uh, grant there as well. Um, the planning grants, what the state board wants to see out of that is they want to see the, the concepts proved out, and they want to see that the end result of that effort is a project that could be funded through their, one of their, um, construction, uh, programs, either, either through their grant program or through a low-interest loan through the state, state board. At that point, construction grants are highly, uh, dependent on the, the money available, and particularly for, um, small disadvantaged communities. So that becomes a, um, a competitive component that, that, um, you really have to look at in terms of, of being able to, um, be eligible, um, for grant money for, for the construction purposes. But there, there's not that, that sort of cap on the planning grants. Other alternatives, um, I identify, again, three groups. One is grants, so that's, that's the, the, kind of the free money, if you will. Um, in addition to the, the state board planning grants, through your local, uh, groundwater group, there's an opportunity to get a project like this listed, described, and start to pursue some, uh, some grant money for study and/or possibly implementation, where the project or program has benefits to, to groundwater conditions, say, in lieu of ground oil recharge. Um, Bureau of Reclamation, uh, through their, their Title sixteen, has, uh, water recycling grants, uh, for both planning and then construction. So some of, some, in particular, larger agencies' facilities like City Modesto, um, uh, the, um, Sacramento Regional, um, wastewater treatment plant are both pursuing USBR grant money for, for their projects, or have already received them. Revenue sources, if you have grants, that's, you know, good money to be able to pursue and get and try to, to kickstart a project. In the end, need to look at, okay, how does the project get, get funded in perpetuity? How do you then construct the major facilities? How do you cover like the two million dollar annual operating cost? So from there, you need to start looking at revenues. So this is just a simple list of some potential revenue sources. Um, one option is you, you look at the benefit to local residents, um, through recycled water project, and say some portion of, of those costs are, are paid by, um, through sewer user fees in, in terms of, of making that, that connection in terms of benefit. Um, recycled water user fees. So this is a resource that you're creating. You're treating it to a high level and delivering it, uh, potentially to a grower or end user. Um, that's a, that's a tough situation still, and particularly in, in Northern California. It's, it's limited to what we call a willingness to pay. So if you were to produce recycled water and say, deliver it to someone within an OID, MID, or SSGID service area, kind of their opportunity, their, their cost would be, they would be comparing the recycled water costs with their cost to receive irrigation district water. So there's an economic kind of threshold there that, that would have to be studied and evaluated, how much, if any, uh, cost recovery could be, um, returned through that method. Um, last one I list there is if you're to go through with a land-based assessment, uh, an assessment for capital, and/or an assessment of some sort for, um, operating maintenance costs. That's, that's a pretty complicated process. Frankly, I don't see it that often in terms of recycled water projects. Um, from there, depending on the, uh, the, the timing of, of capital improvements and, and, um, revenues, you may need to look at some financing mechanisms. Just list those there as some options. So again, going back to some potential next steps, kind of the, the, the opportunities that we see here is one logical next step at this point. If you, as a council, were to look at moving forward, you could look at pursuing a recycled, kind of the two-phase recycled water planning grant, and be able to prove out through that, implementation of that, that planning, be able to prove out the concept here that we've, we've, um, identified in general. Be able to prove out some of the concepts of the willingness to pay, potentially identify users, come up with a refined, uh, pro- process or program of, of treatment through that process, and then really be able to, to, um, see if you want to move forward any, any, any further at that point. So at this point, if there's any, uh, questions, and, and I'd be happy to, to answer them.
Um, you mentioned just, uh, four or five months, uh, of use. We also have to capture all of our stormwater and treat it prior to discharge. And the concept should be developed of receiving the stormwater during the wet months, providing that as a, uh, treatment area to be delivered into the aquifer. Okay, we have, there are aquifer, uh, recharging stations. So your estimates for O and M will have to be changed, increased to include stormwater, at least for the City of Riverbank. And I believe Escalon will have to develop their own, because that's a tremendous amount to pump, and same with Oakdale. Secondly, if you spread it over thirty years and you have a fifty percent grant, the cost will be about, for the City of Riverbank, if we took this project on by ourselves, would be an increase of around three dollars and eighty-two cents a month. That's a lot, granted, but if we have it split between the other two cities, that could be, uh, down to around a dollar twenty per resident, per month to be tertiary treatment. That's the downfall, downsize. What's the plus? The State of California is looking at all water, surface and groundwater to be feed or taxed. You use their groundwater, they're going to claim it. We're going to have to pay them to pump it for our citizens. If we can show that we are reusing the water for agriculture, and that we are pumping more water into the aquifer than we are extracting, then I would present, if they want to bill anybody, I would present the bill to the State of California to pay us. That's what we have to look at. They have been making noise around twenty-twenty-two about doing that. So the project, wherever we have to go, and this fly is going to get me, um, we have to, uh, take a look at whatever action we do. We either conclude it now and, and say, well, let's take the risk, or we can go forward and be proactive. I would say that i- if we're not proactive, that it could be a penalty as, as we either expand, or we have stormwater that we have to capture and we have no, no place to put it. Uh, we have preliminary talks with, uh, Oakdale and, and Escalon. Oakdale was very agreeable to it, but it still has to go through the city council. And, uh, Escalon was neutral on it. Escalon has problems. With the tertiary plant, Oakdale may be the one that we could increase the capacity at a lower cost. But then you have that distance of lift station, which is going to be tremendous for the City of Escalon.
So, so if you were to take some of my costs here, so th- these are based on, say, Oakdale coming to, to Riverbank. Well, it's the same thing going the other way, other way. I mean, you're going uphill a little bit, so you're pumping costs a little bit more, but in terms of the facilities cost, um, you know, the, the flows are, are pretty comparable. So, you know, there's, there, that's where some of the flexibility and, and even in the planning side of things, some of those options or alternative approaches, you can, you can evaluate those.
Do we have any, um, do we have any local, um, any local, um, valley already doing this kind of thing?
Uh, yeah, there's, there's a lot of different programs, um, being developed.
The bigger cities? I'm talking about some of the smaller cities getting together. I was just wondering if we have any of that going on on.
Um, I know of a couple cases, um, I know of one case, it's actually not a good case. So, which, which is, it's actually, it's a good example of, um, how to, to develop the policies and programs so that people are working well together. There are some cases where it's been a challenge. So, um, I think it's important as a project moves forward to have really good communication and, and communication understanding on the capacity implications more than anything. Because in the end, a lot of agencies will wind up relying on the recycled use as, as a capacity. So new development, existing users. There's beneficial use, but there's also an expectation, continued expectation of, of serving those, those users. So the form that that agreement, JPA, organization, whatever it may be, is, is extremely important. So again, I, I know some examples where it's been, been troublesome. But I, I think of, on the, on the larger scale, eh, you know, I've, um, been, I haven't been involved directly, but, uh, um, and I know one, one council member here is probably aware of it, the, between Modesto, um, Series, um, and, and Turlock, you know, that's a project that's, that's moving forward. Um, you know, it's, it's cooperation both on the water side and it's affecting the wastewater side, um, or, or deftailing into the wastewater side. So that's an example where it's, it's been a benefit.
So, one of the things that I know that affects a lot of what's happening in the bigger cities is where they sell this water. Here, do we have a problem in the drought times to, do the farmers have problems getting water? And if so, is the cost that we were to charge, if we had that recycled water, equal to what they pay? If so, I, I don't see how it's going to.
Yeah, it's, eh, it's a very different situation here than, say, further south or on the, um, the west side of the valley. Uh, so those agents, those water districts, those growers that receive water from the state and federal, uh, projects, you know, they've had substantial limitations. And so there's a major driver there to, to have some more reliable source of water. Um, people have talked about recycled water as being drought-proof. It's almost drought-proof. It's, it's pretty close. Um, but there are some reductions when you have particular water conservation. An intended consequence, you have less recycled water. Um, so in those cases, that's where you have growers that have put, you know, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars per acre into, you know, permanent crops that could potentially see that, that investment being lost because of a drought. So I think that's, that, that's a major reason why, say, the, the North Valley Project, um, works. Here, I think SSGID, for example, if you would have asked growers five years ago, say, I, I have no issue. Never had, never had restrictions, curtailments, but I, I think this past drought has, has kind of opened some people's eyes. Now, to what level, we don't know. How much is that risk? Is, is it, is that the, a mitigation of that risk, is it worth a hundred dollars per acre foot, two hundred, five hundred? You know, what is that? That, that's something we just don't know here locally yet.
But the potential probability, isn't there like?
It's not as dramatic.
Unless you use a conveyance, for example, if I use MID as a conveyance of my water that we recycled, to go to the. that we recycled to go to the west side, that's where you have a potential for increasing revenues. Right now, we're getting no revenues for whatever we do, all we're doing is is getting nothing out of it. At the end, you will get a revenue from it. My preference would be, because it's easy, pumping it right to SSGID, which is right down the road about a mile, a lot less in cost for for maintenance, a lot less cost in in construction. And SSGID can then convey it to wherever they want. And it's all, it's like a cap and trade, it's a tax, I mean, it's a water credit. So SSGID can say, well, this is water I get from Riverbank, I'm going to sell it to their west side as an exponent, or a lot more. And whether we get $30 an acre foot, or we get $100 an acre foot, that's revenue that's outside, I wouldn't even consider that, because during the wet months, I would still like to capture that water. And if I don't have a buyer, hit in the ground and get a credit. That's where the future is, the credit that you can receive for the city of Riverbank, because if you don't get that credit, you're going to be paying the state for doing what you're doing right now. And by the way, the state wants or is considering $2 for every water meter out there a month, just so they could have additional revenues for the state water resource.
That's I I kind of jumped over the the cost offset component, so that's kind of a form of that, either either freeing up fresh water that can be delivered. It gets tricky from a water quality perspective, you know, permit perspective, being able to deliver water to streams for people, other people to pick up, because then you're subject NPDS permits, all kinds of different water quality requirements. But if you if you if you deliver it and free up fresh water that can go through that route and you can facilitate and and result in some water transfers, that's that's where there is a potential.
Are there any other questions?
I I got a comment. I'm for the recycling, but what I'm bothered about is how we're going to pay for it. There's a lot of generalizations here, a whole lot of generalizations. And I don't think this study is thorough enough personally. And the commitment that we make will be a burden on this particular community for a long time. I understand what the state may be doing, and there's nothing we can do to stop that, but we don't know how fast it's going to take place at this point in time either. They're always doing something. What bothers me is, OID's had a surplus of water for a long time, they're selling it. So we're going to be competing with them. And I don't know how much the area that on the map, they they are irrigating versus MID. MID seems to be doing all right, and they could be a potential customer. What bothers me about the presentation is, there's too many ifs, potential. I think a more thorough study needs to be done. I'm not against the project, I just need to see better figures and more thorough study. And we need to really see if these other communities are really interested, what we can get for funding, et cetera, et cetera. Because we've got a lot of generalizations on here with a lot of ifs. And I'm I'm a pretty progressive fellow, but when I see too many ifs, I'd like, for something that's big, I'd like to iron them out a bit more. And I would like to see us do a little bit more thorough study that gave us more reasonable figures for exactly what's what, because I don't see that yet in this particular study.
And that's why we're here for guidance tonight without making a decision. Because the first step is making sure we have the study, which with our commitment of $75,000 and a matching grant on that, which will then take us to the next level and answer your questions. No matter what, the, we will not proceed to the next level if it's not economically feasible, or if it's not feasible to regain those groundwaters in the future. The second step, let's say we go to the second step, that's a $4.8 million investment, where we can get 50% of that, that can be grants, the rest of it would be low-income loans that we could get from CalPERS, who's using your money quite foolishly anyway. And then we go from there and and see if if the working model actually exists. And that would be on on the city of Riverbank. And and that's where, you're you're correct, we form a JPA with Oakdale, Escalon, and proceed to step two, which would, does it work? If it does, boom. And it may work if we just say, let's ship ours to a tertiary, non-treated, to Oakdale, where it would cost a lot less for them to go to the next step. But again, we have to form that JPA. But if we do nothing, the state can say, you have one year to change over, because the landscape and water is changing very rapidly, and if we aren't proactive, I don't, we could lose what we have.
So you're saying that we could get a grant for $75,000 to start the study, but we would have to match the fees to do it?
Yes.
Now, can we, can our budget afford the other 75? That's the next thing we determine.
That is something that, when we come on up for discussion again, I'm sure we can find that money.
Okay.
And go from there.
We're we're working on that part of it, actually. Maricel and I were talking about that just today, about how we would work that within the sewer budget. But one of the things that Neil and Michael and I have been talking about is, the value, from my perspective, of moving forward with a study, is that, let's say that the data doesn't show that it makes sense financially. There's still some value you can get out of that plan, because essentially what you're doing is sort of a modified sewer master plan. So you either come up with the idea and concept for future implementation when that day comes, or, you know, other things that we could do out there that might be creative. So I I don't think there's really a downside to doing the study. In fact, if you ask Mike Riddell, our Public Works Superintendent, he would tell you that our current study is outdated and we need to brush it up anyway, so.
And and you have to take a look at where the future is in our development. As we develop further, and we will be developing further, some of those costs will be absorbed directly by them for additional, like, CFDs.
Got you.
Okay?
I'm just concerned about how all this is going to affect our current wastewater treatment plant, how this would all be tied together, looking at costs, I just don't see, right now, if we had to do it today, we wouldn't be able to do it. So I'm, I am in agreement with doing a study.
That's why we got to do this.
Yeah.
The problem that I have with doing a study is, if we're wanting to do it with Oakdale and Escalon, they have to be involved. First of all, we got to find out if they even are interested. I I, when I look at what you're saying that Oakdale's treating to right now, I'm thinking they're not going to want to come with us, they're going to want us to come to them. I don't think we go anywhere until we sit down with the council members or whatever, or a committee gets together with them and says, hey, this is what we'd like to do, we'd like to do a study, you guys in? And the three of us, the three cities, go together on that study. That way, number one, we don't have to take the cost burden on ourselves, and number two, we're moving forward knowing that they want to join us. I don't think we do anything until we know.
I disagree. I think we need the study for the city of Riverbank.
I think that we could use the study to go with what he has proposed on his potential next step, develop the first safe recycle water treatment project, to look at it, to see if it's feasible just for Riverbank, not looking at the other organizations. That's what we need to do, I would figure, first of all.
A lot of money for a study, because then you're just going to have to do another one when you bring the other cities on.
Well, yeah, but this one could benefit, as our city manager said.
Okay, well, we're not making a decision, we're just saying, yep, go forward, let's bring it up to the next level.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Item three, the consent calendar, consists of item 3A wave reading, item 3B approval of August 8, 2017, city council and local redevelopment of 30 minutes. Does anyone approve? Okay, anybody want to make a recommendation? We're moving fast now.
I make a recommendation that we approve item 3.0A and item 3.0B.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve 3A and 3B. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item four, unfinished business. Item 4.1, second reading by title only, and adoption of proposed ordinance, number 2017, tax 007, amending title, 11 business regulations by repealing in its entirety, chapter 120, ban on medical marijuana dispensaries and commercial and outdoor cultivation, and substituting it in its place. A new chapter, 120 cannabis regulations, and repealing sections, 110.19, delivery by vehicle, in chapter 110, business license tax of Riverbank municipal code and ordinances.
Thank you, Mayor. And Donna, if you, Donna Kenny, our planning and building manager, is going to handle this item tonight. While she's on her way up there, she's going to step you step you through the four to five changes that council requested at first reading, be changed, which have been reflected in the report. And then there are two substantive changes that we'd like to discuss, excuse me, two non-substantive changes that we'd like to discuss, that were, one was brought up by legal counsel, another was by a council member prior to the meeting. If you want to, sorry.
Okay. Good evening. As the city manager stated, there have been a couple of changes since the first, the first reading on this. After, you know, consideration, we received a direction to modify the ordinance that the cannabis testing labs that were going to be permitted at 1 per 16,000 in population that be removed. The change from two required inspections to one required inspection after the submittal of an administrative cultivation permit. Require a risk management plan as part of the application submittal for commercial cultivation and cannabis dispensaries. Remove the requirement for employee permits, that would be in a development agreement or whatever the state, how they enact that. And require anti-loitering signage and its enforcement for cannabis dispensaries. Couple other things that have come up since that, oh, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, so the the one that I think is worthy of of a little bit of discussion is, and council touched on this, but we really didn't get into the detail last time, was the 1 to 16,000 ratio for commercial cannabis dispensaries was remained in the ordinance. The city attorney's office brought up a valid concern that setting that ratio has the possibility of creating a kind of a mini monopoly in town, which has practical problems and policy problems associated with it. When Donna and I took a look at it, from a practical perspective, they have to get a use permit and a development agreement to even get approval to open in Riverbank. And so we would recommend that, if that's a, if council shares legal's concern on that, that perhaps the ratio be eliminated completely, and the market will determine how many applications we get. The other component, I think, is worthy, so besides the fact they have to get quite a bit of public review and permitting to get approvals here, there's all types of, there's specific types of uses that it needs to be outside of a 600-foot boundary. So practically, there's not endless commercial properties where this would even be allowed just because of schools and and other locations that may be close. So we're fairly comfortable with that from a staff perspective. The the other was, council member Campbell brought up, which was, we had left in a, for personal cultivation, a initial inspection, and then a yearly annual inspection. Councilman Campbell had a really interesting point, which is that if Riverbank has 25,000 residents, and you say over the next couple of years, we get 1,000 permits, that would mean that we would have somebody doing annual inspections three times a day all year to keep up with just 1,000. And practically, we don't know if that's doable from a staff perspective or really from a regulatory's perspective. So we we would propose that perhaps we include some language in the permit that allows, we have some of this language in some of our other permits that allows us to give them 24-hour, 48-hour notice that we're going to be inspecting if we receive a complaint or 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 become aware of some kind of illegal activity. And then there's one more, Donna, I think you were going to address that one.
Yes, that was under 120.06F, and that had to do with multiple administrative cultivation permit holders within one residence. So for example, if you had a husband who wanted to have his six plants, and a woman who, and the wife who wanted six plants, they would not be able to do that. They would have to split three, or they would have to one grow their six plants, and then when that was done, the other grow their six plants, because it's per residence. So it had some language to propose that we change F, which currently states, holders may cultivate marijuana at the same private residence, however, the private residential include more than one cultivation site or more than six total plants at one time, which isn't very clear. So the suggestion is to to add, or to change it to, not more than six living plants may be planted, cultivated, harvested, dried, or processed within a single private residence at any one time. That also helps to clear up for, like, apartments. If the landlord would allow the apartment dwellers to cultivate in their apartments, they would be able to have six in each private residence. So it actually kind of clears up two areas that were a little bit muddied and and not quite clarified.
Any other?
That concludes our report. Those are the all the substantive changes. We can go through anything else council would like to, but we've now met on this half a dozen times, so I suspect you probably don't want to hear it again.
Okay, with the changes you're proposing.
Anyone from the public wish to comment? Say no, bring it back. We had any further discussion and or recommendation?
Well, I make a recommendation that we go with the changes as stated.
And approve item 4.1 with the changes.
Yes.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 4.1 with the stated changes to the ordinance. By roll call vote?
Council members, Fosse.
Yes.
Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
New business. Direction on League of California Cities Annual Conference Resolutions.
Thank you, Mayor. As councils are aware, in the second week in Septem, uh, excuse me, yes, second week in September, the League of California Cities Conference, this is, there we go, will be holding its annual meeting. At that conference, there is a process by which cities can suggest that league-wide issues, city statewide issues be considered by the General Assembly. So essentially, there's a process by which you submit the issue, the league, if there's enough cosponsors, will then bring it up at the annual league conference, it'll go to one of the various league subcommittees, of which most, or a number of our council members already sit on those. And then that subcommittee will recommend approval or or denial by the General Assembly, which votes on the final day of the conference. They're intend, these resolutions are intended to be broad in nature, generally addressing issues of concern for local government, so they're they're really not supposed to be about specific issues that are geographic, they're really supposed to be issues of concern for the cities of California. There's two that are up this year, and this item is intended to give our voting member, who's council member Barbara Martinez, a little direction on on the council's opinion about these two resolutions. The first resolution is fairly straightforward. It calls upon the governor and legislature to enter into discussions with the league and public safety stakeholders to identify and implement strategies that will reduce the unintended negative impacts of existing criminal law. So it's a very broad title, but here's what it means in a nutshell. As councils are aware, in, over the last couple of years, you've had the passage of AB 109, SB 45, and SB 47. The laws have done a number of things, but primarily, they have have reclassified a number of of what were felonies to misdemeanor offenses. They've also changed some of the rules for how we determine what a nonviolent offender is, and and the overall goal of all of these bills was to sort of reduce the pressure and of of the the penal system, especially with regard to corrections. So I think the the chief could tell you, because if you're around him enough, you'll hear him and most other chiefs talk about it, that this has really changed the landscape over the last couple of years for law enforcement. The data supports that and shows that property crimes are up about 145% over the last couple of years, and violent crimes are up, I think, over 50% was the number I saw. So there have been real practical issues with the policy, and so this is sort of a result of cities feeling the added pressure of having to account for this public safety issue and continue to staff appropriately for it, because practically, it's really issue and continue to staff appropriately for it, because practically, it's really become city issues. When, when nonviolent offenders are released early or, or felonies are reduced to misdemeanors, it means more, more work for police officers, plain and simple. So, resolution specifically requests that the issues are addressed with the AB 109, with the legislature, that we revise the definition of violent crime. There's some specifics in the staff report, but it basically wants to see the league call for proposed amendments to the California Constitution, which would call out very specific offenses and, and indicate them as violent crimes. And finally, data sharing, so more efficient data sharing through the smart justice platform to provide a statewide data source, so that local law enforcement can share more efficiently across platforms. So that's the first resolution.
Let's stay with the first one.
Let's stick with that, okay.
The, the league has been in discussions with legislatures to come up with new definitions. A couple of the senators and, and assembly members are trying to redo the definitions, trying to specify where the prisoners will not be released or be returned, what are the thresholds. But I think this should be an ongoing continuing effort that the league continues with the, I think it's through the Public Safety Committee? Do we have anybody on that?
No.
No? Looking at the chief. No? Okay. But, yeah, I, I believe this right here is something that should, should continue, and then we should also emphasize a deadline, that they have some, something out there, hopefully to affect the next budget for June of 2018. But, that's up to you, you get to choose. Any other comments?
I disagree with everything you said, I support it.
You do?
I support it.
I support it too.
Okay, good.
That's how we bring in that for it.
Thank you.
We got to help her out.
Okay. Resolution number two, now, this is much more, this is less applicable to Riverbank, but just for clarity, it amends government code 38611 to clarify the definition of local control and provides broad statutory authority for local officials to determine emergency service levels and direct emergency medical response within their jurisdictions. Okay, so, this comes from the city of Tracy. It's a very specific issue that kind of has more broad implications and is now being tied to local, local control. Essentially, the deal is that each county, the way that EMS response, essentially ambulance response and fire response is set up, is the state has a, a state EMS agency, they create a set of guidelines and rules that each individual EMS agency for each county has to follow. Then they hire a medical director who oversees the EMS agency, basically directs the resources so they're most appropriately used and there's the best response times, and, and there's some, as I understand it, also some discussion about which units respond to specific types of calls, if fire is involved or not. So, and it's a, it's essentially a regional model for a regional issue. The resolution seeks to shrink that a little and make, for cities that invest significant resources in EMS, to allow the cities and city councils to more directly manage EMS response in their jurisdictions, because they're making those investments. And so that's how they sort of tie the local control issue to the matter. As I said, for Riverbank, it's, from my perspective at least, it's really not an issue for us, my opinion is that our EMS services are top-notch and, and they seem to coordinate with Stanislaus Consolidated fairly well. So, but, that, that's essentially the issue that's, that's being brought up and, and, you know, staff doesn't really have a recommendation for council either way on that.
I have a question. Does this, I know that in our community here, we have an ambulance service and we have the Consolidated Fire Department, and they both go out on calls. And, clarify for me, who gets there first, takes care of it, or do they both take care of it, or?
Depends on the, the, the issue, so if it's a, you know, my understanding is that if it's a very serious, you know, injury, you, your first responders will typically be consolidated and backing right on their heels will be the ambulance service who will then take the patient.
Consolidated is always the first responder.
Usually, you know, it depends on the call, but, but yeah, usually.
And depending on the location of units available.
Yeah.
I have a comment on this. Oh, you do? You know about this?
Well...
Go ahead.
My only thing is, local control is local control. And whether it applies to us per se right now, again, I think local control is where we all need to be on the same page. And that's where I'm at with this one. I know it doesn't affect Riverbank per se right now, this minute, but again, I'll say local control is probably our top priority, and I think all of us that attend the league and, and with many issues, local control is, is where I'm at with it. So that's just my two cents I wanted to throw in there.
Okay, local control, I agree. My issue with the resolution number two is that dig deeper, and it's a catfight between the county and a special district. And the county set the rules for the special district to follow, and that's how the hierarchy does it. The state gave, gave us money, established this EMS, said at the county level, this is what you do, and that you do the control, and now there's a special district who wants to be a fire district, wants to be the primary responders to get additional revenue. And to provide the level of service that they can provide. They don't want the county to say, wait a minute, this type of call, you don't need to go there, because the EMS team can get there, do the treatment, and go on. Now, if there's an accident and there's possible hazmat, okay, fire department, you're the primary responder, and you won't have EMS there doing the primary responding because of hazardous material. So, it's a jurisdictional squabble between a county and a special district. And how you resolve that, from what I understand, you agree to the rules, go to LAFCO, and they approve it. So that's, that's the mechanism for doing that. And I think if we say, hey, let's take away some of the mechanisms on how you orderly go about regulating special districts, and your association with the county is where you give up local control, and that you can have a special district tell you what you can and cannot have. That's, that's how I read it. And now, you can read it any way you want, you'll hear the argument, we'll all hear the argument.
We will.
And we'll strong arm you at the, and we'll, we'll let you do this, but if anybody has a recommendation that we go forward with an approval on that, that's so be it. I, I would recommend that we either remain neutral on it or go with this, or as the league say, we watch.
Well, I, as I said, I just read it a little bit differently, so maybe I need some more information, maybe it is a good idea for us to maybe wait and see if we...
Yeah, I, I say we remain neutral.
Because I did, I read it differently than...
I would go along with that.
Watch it and see what happens.
I agree. Now, can the, will the public want to make a response to either resolution number one or two and influence her vote?
For our lovely city.
Okay, Seann, you have direction or, or guidance, and you are independent, you can do whatever you want, if we don't like it, we'll go after you. With that, we'll go to item seven, which are comments and reports, item 7-1, staff.
No reports this evening, thank you.
Hey, council member Fossey?
The only comment I want to make is I, it was nice to see everybody come to the council meeting tonight. I'd like to see it at every council meeting, on everything that we discuss. It's very important for us to get our residents' feedback on how we address issues, and if you're not here giving it to us, we kind of go sometimes a way you may not want. So, again, I thank you for everybody that came today and gave us your opinion and your comments.
Thank you. Council member Campbell?
I'd just like to say, it's a pleasure to work up here with my colleagues, because they all are very professional in how they deal with things, and over the past several weeks, we've dealt with some very touchy subjects, and I'm very proud of the way that this council has handled these subjects, the discussion and whatnot, and once again, it's a pleasure to have you as colleagues.
You don't get a pay raise.
I don't want a pay raise.
Council member Barbara Martinez?
I also would like to thank everyone for coming out, appreciate your, your comments, appreciate your presence, and it is very difficult sometimes, the decisions that we have to make. But if we don't hear from you, then we don't know what it is and how you're feeling, so please always come out, meaning that, you know, sometimes the topics are boring, but we still have to make decisions. And we, we, I like to speak, probably can't speak for everyone, but for myself, the decisions that I make are for the whole city, not for special interests, because we have to make sure that, that everyone, you know, is, everyone is going to be affected, so we'll make sure we're making the right decisions for everyone. I also would like to invite everyone to come out on September 7th. We have been having a lot of conversations, a lot of meetings about the North County Corridor. Remember, that is the expressway that will be coming from that side of 99 to the east side of Oakdale, and it's going to be at the, it's going to be a public hearing in Oakdale and at the community center, and I believe the time is 6:00?
5:30, I think it is. It's a long term...
Oh, 4:00 to 8:00.
It's a long time, so it's, it's not a presentation, it is a, there it is, go up and ask questions, and after this EIR, which is out there, and we have, you have one? We have these neat little thumb drives that come in like a shape of a credit card, if you'd like to download it and read 1,000 pages, look at maps. There are two volumes, you're welcome to have one.
Amen.
And the last thing I'd like to say is, please join me in your prayers for civility for our, our city. It's, you know, it's sad to say, these are the sign of the times for right now, but if we all work together, pray together, we can be the best that we can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I appreciate all my council members' comments, and the only thing that I had in there is I know many of the folks talked about the resolution, I would encourage the you folks to get us the resolution, we hadn't seen it before we came tonight. We all have email addresses, it's all on the website, you can email us with any of your questions and concerns, emails and our phone numbers are on there. So, I would encourage you guys to not only come and show up at council meetings, but please know that those are some avenues to get us information, if you so choose to. So, and I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to speak for the council, and you can oppose me if you want, but it was a heartfelt comment on opposing white supremists. Up here at this diocese, we will not tolerate any white supremacist or any organization that will promote racial discard, violence, or hatred. The city of Riverbank becomes 95 years old tomorrow, happy birthdays, Riverbank.
Happy birthday.
I would like to take a look at, at policies that we can govern, the care and board homes in the city of Riverbank. And the reason why is that a care and board home house is contracting with Mariposa County to take criminally insane individuals incarcerated on one day and bring them into the care home system in Riverbank in a residential area the next. We have to take a look legally, we have to look at it socially, if we will continue allowing that. You can't put a fence up around and keep them from moving out into the, to the city. You see them walking around the streets, some of them, and sometimes they walk away and they become our future homeless, and there's nothing we can do. But yet, the care and board, the board and care home continues to get paid a couple thousand dollars a month, the $4,000 a month for those individuals. I'm not begrudging them that. Do we want to say, in the city of Riverbank, you have to approve any contract such as that through our housing department, or through the city manager, or through this council? Or do we allow it to continue? This will put on a burden on the city that will put us at odds with the community development services in, in Sacramento. But they won't talk to us unless we make it an issue, and if it is an issue that we are concerned with, that we have some public, where's our, we don't have her here, I wanted Virginia Seals to hear this too, public comments or, or newspapers, just putting out there, what are the issues, and how do we get them addressed to the public, and if there is any input? Now, that being said, those criminally insane or those incarcerated under medical and psychiatric treatment needs release, but is it appropriate in a residential neighborhood? I don't know. I don't know that answer, we need to sit down and talk about that. On the 12th of September, we'll have a combined meeting with the city of Riverbank, and if we have any consent items, we can bring those on up, whether it is the, the first or consent item on changing rules on either the BAC or the Planning Commission.
Oh, okay.
Okay? And I don't get to talk about the North County Corridor. Okay. All right, with that, we're going to enter into closed session, and the public will have five minutes to come on each of this closed session as set for it on the agenda. On item 5, 8.1, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section 54956.8, property 6612, Central Avenue, Riverbank, California. Agency negotiator, city manager, Sean Scully. Property negotiator, Danielle Vidal, under negotiation, price, term, payment, or both. Item 8.2, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code 54957.6. Agency representative, city manager, Sean Scully. Employee organization, Riverbank Miscellaneous Employees, Riverbank Mid-Management Bargaining Unit. Do I have public comment? Okay, no? We adjourn to closed session. Thank you all for being here.
Thanks for being here.
We reconvene from closed session, report from closed session, item 9.1, report from closed session, item 8.1, conference with real property negotiators, direction has been provided to staff. Item 9.2, report from closed session, item 8.2, conference with labor negotiators, direction has been provided with, to staff. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, and have a good evening.